I'm starting a little bit, we're starting a little bit late because we still had folks that were checking in. Thank you all for coming out tonight. My name is Tom Daley. I'm your moderator, again. Nobody's wanted to take the job, so. All right, this, so if we could have everybody sit down. I'd like to start out with a pledge of allegiance, so if everybody could stand up and face the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. If you, if you see in the annual report inside the front cover, the report's dedicated to Charlie Becker, Pauline Knapp, Merce Snow, and Tim Finney. I'd like to call for a moment of silence and think of those Shaffsbury residents who have passed, as well as other ones who have passed who I have not named, as well as, it's always a marvel that we're able to govern ourselves the way that we do, to meet as we do. And it's something that's very, very sacred, that if we stand and look out into the world all around us, we don't have to look very far to see how it could be. And, you know, the various conflicts that are going on, regardless of whose side any of us are on. I always think, I was told one time, the difference between America, the United States, and all the rest of the world is in most of the rest of the world, you get a gun, whereas in America, you go get a lawyer. And whether you like lawyers or not, that's how our system is. And I guess I'm just asking that we all just remember that, as well as for any, any of your own wishes and remembrances. Okay, let me now start with some of the process. I want to introduce our board. Art Whitman is the chairman, Tony Krulakowski, next to him, vice chair, Martha Cornwell, member. You're my neighbor. Mike, Mike Chianowski, and Naomi.
Miller.
Miller, thank you. They switched positions on me. I had it written down. Let's see. Cat TV is recording us and broadcasting live. It's going to be important that when you're recognized that you come up, and we'll wait while you come up, so that you can use the microphone, so that it's picked up, so that the folks that are watching on Cat TV, as well as on Zoom, which Jen Hawley's taking care of. Jim Byers is from Cat TV. I don't want to omit, the person that checked you in along with Martha helping was our town clerk, Marlene Hall. If you ever need answers, that's where you go. And she'll either answer it or send you where you need to be. The supper tonight, there were a lot of folks that took part in putting it together, but I believe it was spearheaded by Karen Mellinger, so I want to give her a real quick round of applause for what she did. David Durfee. David, where are you? Why don't you come on up? He's our legislator. He's going to take five minutes and give us a rundown on what's been going on in Montpelier.
Hey, thanks, Tom. Hi, everybody. I am David Durfee. I am the elected state representative from Shaffsbury. I also have Glossenberry. If any of you folks here are the nine people who live in Glossenberry, I represent you. And then several hundred people who live in the town of Sunderland are also in my district. We are in, the legislature is in session from January through typically the middle of May is the halfway point in the session, and will be, will be out all week and then back up there, back up there next week. I wanted to just tell a story or two, first of all, about the work that we do when we're not in session. It's, it's, in some senses, a year-round job, and from time to time, people will reach out, and I would encourage anybody to reach out anytime if you have some, some matter of state business that you're having trouble with. A year and a half ago or so, back during the last election, I was standing out at the Four Corners here with a sign waving at people, and people were generally waving back, smiling, giving me encouraging feedback. And then somebody pulled up in a car, rolled down his window, and I could tell right away that this person had a different perspective. And he was in his driver's seat, so he had to sort of lean over and say, you know, can you see what traffic is like coming in the direction? Because I can't, because there's a car parked right there. And I knew what he was talking about. There was a car parked right there in the corner every day. And any of you who were driving across that intersection on a school morning when traffic was bad probably know exactly what I'm talking about. And the person who was in the car seemed to know what the law said and suggested that I do something about having the law implemented. And it turns out that, in fact, this is a state road that runs through town, and it was a state issue. I made some inquiries in Montpelier, and I had to, it was essentially the select board that needed to take action on that. So I brought it to the select board and said, just wanted you to know, here's some feedback from a member of the community. And today, there's a sign there now that says, can't park here. There's no parking. And congratulations to the select board for following up on that, because I think it's made a big impact. And also to whoever that was who rolled down his window that day, thank you for your citizen On that note of citizen participation, I'll sort of talk a little bit about some of the big issues that have been going on in Montpelier. I think maybe four years ago, when I was here, right before the pandemic was starting, we weren't, we weren't obviously talking about the pandemic, and that continues to be a big, a big factor in what's happening in Montpelier. But we had some big, big issues, housing, workforce, childcare, and broadband. And today, I can share, and it's, it's no longer really news, but it's happened over the past year, we here in Bennington County now have broadband internet connections to every residence, in Shaffsbury, in Bennington, in every other town except for Reedsboro and Stanford, which are part of a different district. And the legislature, legislature gets some credit, I would say, for that. We, we set up a program that enabled local communities, if they wanted to, to do the work, to get internet. The federal government certainly stepped up with funding during and after the pandemic, and it would have been more challenging without that. But ultimately, it was local members of the community who got together, informed the communications union district, and made that happen. And, and all volunteers. I know Tim Scoggins had a big part in that, others here in this room, others around town as well. And I was just talking with somebody earlier about the, the impact that's had on the demand now for, for housing, that there were, there were places in Shaffsbury and certainly in other rural areas of the state where outside of the area that was covered by high-speed internet, it was harder to sell property, and people were less interested in building there for obvious reasons. And, and that's, that's changed rather rapidly. The other big thing I'll mention that's changed is that childcare now, childcare, which has been a problem for a number of years, and Vermont accessing childcare at an affordable price, the legislature passed Act 76 last year, and we're, we're already seeing upwards of 7,000, I think, new childcare slots have opened just in the past year, and more coming online all the time. The, the other two issues that I mentioned, housing and workforce, we're continuing to work on. Last year, there was several hundred million dollars that was, that was appropriated to help build housing, affordable housing, as well as missing middle-class housing. We're working a lot this year on updates to Act 250, which is Vermont's 50-plus now year-old land use law that has made really Vermont look the way that it does today in many positive ways. We want to be sure that it's not preventing development, particularly in downtowns where there's already existing infrastructure for wastewater, for, for water. Expect, I would think by the end of this session, there may actually be some reform to Act 250. The other big thing I'll mention, we're coming out of the, of the time now where the federal government sent literally hundreds of millions of dollars our way to Vermont to deal with the pandemic. And that enabled us to spend money in ways that probably won't happen again in, in any of our lifetimes. The, the economy has been strong, tax revenues have been good, driven by a lot of that spending, and that is perhaps not going to be the case this year. So we're looking at putting together a budget, always a balanced budget in Vermont, that's a little more conservative than it has been in previous years. And that unfortunately means not being able to invest in all the programs that everybody would like us to. I think I've probably used up and maybe gone over my five minutes, so I'll stop there. I'm happy to take any questions. Jim? Am I doing something wrong?
That's over there.
So I am happy to take any questions. I'll also be here and stay long afterwards, and happy to chat with anybody after the meeting tonight as well. In the, in the town report, there's a page here that has contact information, my phone number and email address are there. Please feel free to reach out anytime.
Thank you, David. We much appreciate it. That's mine. Don't go with that. I'll be lost. I won't know what to do. Thank you very much. Okay, we can get to the official part of the meeting. Usually start with reading the warning, which in your town report, it's on page 14. And usually somebody makes a motion that we dispense with the reading of the warning. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All in favor of dispensing with reading the warning, which is on page, Act said 14, it's on page 16, in the, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The first article is to hear the reports of the town officers and take action there on. Remember, this is always a funny one, because the reports are presented in here. Generally, you don't take action. If we do, it's just we vote to accept them. But it's also at this time that two things, one is if there are any corrections that anybody sees that need to be corrected, now is when we would make them. I'm going to make one. In last year's minutes, my name is spelled D-A-L-Y. My name is supposed to be D-A-I-L-E-Y. So my wife picked up on it. But it's all right, it's spelled right on, on the rest of the things. All right, you want to, the second thing is, Art, do you want to make a presentation?
Do you want to go down the slide, or does that, does that come later?
Well, I was going to, okay, hold on a second.
To.
No, I got it out of order. You're right. Anybody got any, well, actually, to give a closure, how about a motion that we accept the reports as presented?
Second?
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Next, Article Two is to determine, shall the select board members each receive an annual stipend of $750, A; B, shall the Board of Auditors be paid a wage at the rate of $15 per hour; and C, shall the first and second constable be paid a wage at the rate of $15 per hour? Currently, aren't the select board at $1,000? I thought last year we changed it to 1,000.
It was voted.
Karen did.
Right. Yes.
It's going to be my question. My, oh, it's actually 750, and I would make a motion.
Before you make that motion, just hold on just a second, I'll recognize you. So we'll take it A, B, and C separately. So how about, I need a motion that the select board members each receive an annual stipend of $750. I need a motion and a second in order to get it onto the floor.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Karen, you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I do.
Couldn't you actually?
As I said last.
Could you find up to the microphone so that we could? This way, you're going to be on the record. Everybody's going to hear.
I thought it was the last time. People say I have a loud voice, so, you know, I think this, one of the things I said last year was that this board, I think, has done a tremendous job, even more so this year. I mean, I think they've been asked to do an awful lot. There's a lot of subcommittees. We had a lot of issues and still have some issues around solar. They've set up a, you know, an, an energy committee or are setting it up. ARPA funds to deal with. We're opening, hopefully, at some point soon, a community center downtown here. Last year, I said I thought 750 was, you know, we needed to make, to acknowledge how hard they work. I've sat on this board, I know what it takes. And I think even if it's just a gesture, even if they don't take it, because I know sometimes select board members do not take the salary, I would make that motion again, that we increase what you have budgeted for yourselves, which is 750, to 1,000, and I hope going forward, you keep it at that, because an extra $1,250 or whatever it is for the kind of work you all, I know, are doing and volunteering, a gazillion hours, I think is well worth it, so.
So we've got a motion that has been amended, that the, and seconded, that the select board members be paid $1,000?
I was just going to say.
Okay. Any other discussion about the amendment? Let's vote on the amendment first. Motion's been made and seconded to amend the article that select board be paid $1,000 rather than 750. You're just voting right now to amend the article. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Main article? All in favor of paying them $1,000 rather than 750?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. B, shall the Board of Auditors be paid a wage at the rate of $15 per hour? I need a motion that that happen? Second? Any discussion about paying the auditors $15 an hour? You ready to vote? Motion's been made and seconded that the Board of Auditors be paid a wage at the rate of $15 an hour. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. C, shall the first and second constable be paid a wage at the rate of $15 per hour? I need a motion for that?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion about, or debate, or questions on that? All in favor of first and second constable be paying a wage at the rate of $15 an hour? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, when are we going to collect taxes? Shall the town authorize the collection of taxes on real or personal property by its treasurer, which are due in hand on or before Tuesday, November 12th, at 5:00 p.m., or likewise postmarked no later than November 12th? I need a motion?
Second?
This would just be that the authorizes the treasurer to collect the taxes Tuesday, November 12th, by 5:00 p.m., or if they're mailed, that they be postmarked November 12th. Any questions or discussion or debate? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, you want to talk before the budget?
So you'll, you'll break when you get to the budget.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, everybody. This is the true meaning of Vermont democracy, when we can get together, have a meal, and discuss the town business. This is just fantastic. I'm going to give a report of, of the selectmen, will then break and have a, the motion for the budget, then we'll discuss the budget, and we have to do that in case that there's somebody wants to talk about it, the motion has to be on the floor for discussion, okay? It's just a procedure thing, okay? But the first thing I have the pleasure of doing is announcing something for you all that, of course, you all know that Dave Kernan is retiring. That made the select board, the entire select board, the nominee, the search committee and the hiring committee. With the help of V L T C and our own websites and so on and so forth, we got over 20 applications. We narrowed that down to six. Of those six, we had interviews through Zoom. We then narrowed it down to two more people, came down to those two people coming to Coal Hall. They spent some time with the staff there and the Department of, the DPW manager, because those people have to work with this new person. We wanted to get their perspective, and it was important that we, that we talked to them about it. So I'm happy to announce that we have a new town manager, or it's not town administrator, there is a difference. Her name is Paula Eichen. She lives in Ohio right now, but she was born and raised in New England, is desperate to get back here. In fact, next week, she's going to start house hunting, and she hopes to start work on April 1st, which is amazing. So I hope you, we feel we have the right person, and I hope you welcome her with open So the year in review, I think the biggest topic is ARPA. I got to commend the ARPA committee for what they did. This was a committee that did a complete search throughout town, postcards, even came to the school and talked to the kids about what they wanted. This is going to be their town, when you think about it. The main things that came out were upgrading Coal Hall to make ADA compliant, and a, and a civic center someplace in town. The select board then went ahead and bought roughly a two-acre parcel with an old building on it. It's just to the east of Coal Hall. I'm calling it the Shea Building. Used to be a Shea Furniture Factory, or, yeah, a woodworking place there. We also have under contract to buy roughly a one-acre parcel just to the north of Coal Hall, which has a building on it. We are creating a nice area that we can do all of this. But all this requires a lot of help from you people, because we now need committees to discuss how this is going to happen. So we have a, we're looking for members to, of a community center thing, how is this going to be? We're looking for economic development, because the whole thing can't happen without all the rest of the town improving. We need a Coal Hall upgrade committee. There's already some people volunteered for that. We have a sewer feasibility study coming. The state has given us a grant money for an engineering company to come down here and talk about a sewer, a more regionalized community sewer project. 25 or 30 years ago, I was on the Economic Development Committee that looked, brought a firm in here, and they talked about a big pipe system going from here to Bennington. The cost was prohibited, it just didn't go anyplace. We're hoping, we definitely need something in town. We can't grow unless we get a better handle on that, so. And we have been told that we really need an energy committee. This energy committee is people that are knowledgeable in all aspects of energy. They will assist us in making decisions on how we utilize energy, but not only personally, but on all the town buildings and so on and so forth. One of the other things that we did was we came up with some new speed ordinances. Luckily, Dave Kernan was a certified traffic analyst analyzer, so he was proficient in looking at roads, determining what the speed limit should be and that sort of stuff. We actually had roads, depending on which way you're traveling on it, at different speed limits. So hopefully, we've got all that just out. The reason this is coming up is because the Department of Public Works has done such a fantastic job with the roads over the last few years, that people are going faster, and it's becoming a concern. So you'll see, so we've, we've passed some ordinances, the signs, we hope are right in all the places that they're supposed to be. And in order, you'll see in our budget that we've actually doubled the amount of money that we're going to send to the Sheriff's Department. We're asking for twice as much coverage as what we've had in the past, okay? Hopefully, we can do something about this. The other thing was there was no, there was no gun or shooting ordinance in Village Residential. So we passed an ordinance that there now is a shooting ordinance in Village Residential. What that did is that brought to our attention that there is a big wooded area at the end of Holiday Drive that was Village Residential, that we had to change the zoning to let people go down there and target practice and shoot squirrels, in season, of course, and that sort of stuff. So next month, for two years now, we have been working on a project to put a sidewalk on Grandview Street. Next month, the, the engineers will be coming down, and they have finished their study. The design and the cost estimate will be presented to the public sometime in the next month or so, okay? What else? The, probably the most important thing that I need to talk about is that in January, we sound the host town agreement with the solar, with Shaffsbury Solar. This is a document or a thing that is on their checklist, one of thousands of things that they have to do before they go, before the PUC, which is the ultimate decider of whether or not it goes. This, all this document says is that it is in accordance with our town. This, all this document says is that it is in accordance with our town plan. Our town plan says we welcome sewer, or solar, but it has lots of restrictions in there. It restricts the roads that they can drive on with even their pickup cars and truck, and cars, or pickups and cars are restricted only to use from East Road, that part of Holy Smoke Road, which goes directly to the solar project, and the state of Vermont has given permission for them to build a road and a curb right off from Super Seven, right directly to the project, so all big trucks will be going that way. It also stipulates a lot of other things. One of them is that every year that it operates, they will pay this to the state education fund twenty-eight thousand dollars. That goes directly to the state education fund. Every year that it operates, they pay this, the town of Shasbury, a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. That is just for, goes in, that has nothing to do with school tax, that is just for the town of Shasbury. Every year that it operates, we are allowed to send them a tax bill, a property tax bill, which then, of course, is split between school tax and town tax. That tax is based on formulas that the state tells us we can do. Every year that operates, we get fifteen thousand dollars towards the purchase of a new brush truck. We are responsible for the grass fire that's going to be within the enclosed area. We have nothing, we are not responsible for solar panels or the building or anything else. They just want us to make sure that the brush, or grass fires, if there is any, are controlled within the area before it gets outside. They have agreed to set up electric charging stations on town property, put up some solar panels, possibly on the new town green and that sort of stuff, and upon groundbreaking, will be given a fifty thousand dollar gift. I think this is great for the town of Shasbury. Looking forward to projects during this construction season. We've done almost all the big culverts in town, so really, this is, the next big project is the paving of White Creek Road. It's in pretty bad shape as far as soft places where the things are sinking in and that sort of stuff. We actually have hired an engineering firm to do test borings, so that we know where the problems are, so that we aren't going to be making the same mistake twice. This is probably a project that's going to take at least two or three budget, budgets to come up with enough money, so we're looking at probably twenty-five or twenty-six before this can be done. As always, tree work and ditching are important aspects of keeping the roads safe and passable. Jim White, our last tree warden, is retired, and so now we have a new tree warden, Dave Mans III. His job is to do a tree inventory, which tells, which will mark and tell us trees that are dangerous, dead trees, trees that are in, going to cause a problem, and then it's our job to make sure that they can come down in a timely manner. The screening ordinance, that was, that was another ordinance that was passed. The enhanced energy plan, the planning commission is working on an enhanced energy plan, but something that came out of that was a screening ordinance that is quite detailed about what, how to screen, where to screen, and so on and so forth. That is, it's on the website, I assume, because it was an ordinance that was passed. So look it up on the website if you're at all concerned about it. Did I miss anything? We are going to next go to the budget type of thing, but before we do that, I just, in closing my report, or the selectman's report, I just say, I, I, I've always, I've always said that this is a special town. For the last ten years, we've had Dave Kernan as our town administrator, who did an excellent job, and then all of a sudden, he's gone for over two months, and everything kept operating. It's amazing. There were no major glitches, of course, there were a lot of questions, but we survived it. I've said before what a wonderful town it is to be in. The school is the best around here. The fire department is recognized as one of the best in the state, and Coal Hall staff and D P W department, all the way from Shelley and Greg at the, to the transfer station, are all superb, and I hope you agree with me. Thank you. Because of Karen's message.
Yep.
That's the new budget.
Okay.
You have to vote on that number right there.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Okay. The next article we're going to take up is the budget. What I need to do is, I'm going to ask for, I'll read the article, and I'm going to ask for a motion and a second in order to get the budget onto the floor. Then Art will come back and do a presentation on the budget. At that time, you'll be able to ask questions, comments, debate, things like that. So the budget is in our, it's in our town report, it's on pages twenty-six to forty-two. So, the article, shall the town authorize collection of, strike that, wrong one, they're not numbered. Here we go. Shall the town appropriate the sum of two million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2025? The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds. I need a motion to that effect. Somebody make a motion?
I'll vote.
Got a motion? How about a second? Motion's been made and seconded that the town would appropriate the sum of two million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2025. Want to make a presentation, Art?
I need my cheat sheet.
Oh. Yeah.
We actually are going to talk about three different budgets. If you're confused, don't feel bad, it took me years to quite understand this. The 2023 budget is the one that we just finished up on June 30th of '23. That particular budget was 6.2% over budget. The reasoning for that was that energy costs skyrocketed during that period of time, not only for the diesel fuel and gas that the, that the town has to buy to maintain everything, but everything that was brought into us, the chloride, the gravel, all that sort of stuff required a higher cost because of energy. Energy cost runs everything, okay? In, in your thing, the second two, the second and third column are the budget we're working on at this time, 2024 budget. As you see, we are not through it, so the year-to-date numbers are the year-to-date numbers, but the, but the thing is that the 2025 budget is what we're talking about right now. That's the number of your thing. That budget is up by eight point four percent over the 2024 budget. There are several reasons, this is the first time in the ten years that I've been on the select board that we have presented a budget that was more than what the cost of living was. Several reasons for this is health insurance and wages are a big factor. Health insurance went up more than, more than the cost of living by a lot. We have a very aggressive health insurance plan for our employees, but we have good employees, so we want to take care of them. Truck and equipment maintenance or parts are just gone out of sight, it's crazy. We also put in for a summer helper, because as we get more and more properties that we have to take care of, it doesn't make sense to pull a man that has a C D L off a dump truck and put him on a, on a lawnmower for a couple of days to mow around Coal Hall and all the other areas that we're now coming up with. Those people are more valuable doing the job that they're trained for, so we're looking for a summer, a summer intern that can do mow lawns and things like that.
Art, can you just get closer to the microphone? Some people can't see.
Okay, I'm sorry. We don't quite dare turn the volume up, so we had a squeak there a while back. Okay. And we doubled the amount of money that we're paying the sheriff, asking them for twice as many hours as what they've given to us in the past. Those are the main reasons for the increase, other than the normal inflation that is hitting us all. Jen, I'm ready for. Can you give me the, the other budget first?
Now, now.
If I stand there, am I?
You can raise the microphone.
Probably best.
Should this line out?
It was a good idea. There we go.
There you go.
Okay, obviously, the biggest part of the pie is the Department of Public Works. Forty percent of our budget goes to Department of Public Works, and I'll break that down later. The next biggest one is general government, twenty-one percent. And I've mentioned it in the past, garbage is expensive, it's eight percent. It's the third, it's the third biggest wedge in the pie. This year, public safety is also up, because we've doubled what we're giving to the sheriff. And also, in public safety, we have taken what used to be community appropriations for the rescue squads, we've taken that out of community appropriations, and it's a line item on our budget, because we feel that the town is responsible for the safety of the citizens, therefore, we want to make sure that we always have rescue plans with both Arlington and Bennington. Transfer to reserves. Shasbury is really blessed to have, this thing started quite a few years ago. We have a reserve fund for every piece of equipment that needs to be replaced in the future, so that at the time that they're going to be replaced, we do not have to borrow money and pay interest and all that sort of stuff. The money is there for, for that purchase, but it's a challenge, because inflation is going crazy with us. For instance, the next fire truck we buy, which probably won't be delivered for a couple more years, is costing us three times the truck that it replaces, so this, it's, it's a challenge, okay? I don't think there's debt service. We do owe money on two little pieces of equipment. One is the tractor that mows the roadside, and the other one is an excavator. We traded in a larger one and bought a more, one that suited our purpose, and we owed a little bit of money on that. We got like two percent interest loans from the state, so that's all, okay? Let me see the D P W. So we're taking the biggest one and breaking that down. Again, forty-two percent wages and benefits for the help. That's the biggest share. Construction and maintenance, gravel, all that sort of stuff, twenty-six percent. Equipment maintenance, twelve, and again, the transfer to reserve accounts, sixteen percent. Along the, along the budget items, in the budget that you just voted, or voted to bring to the floor, we, it is, has all the community appropriations that are listed, I don't know what page it is, but you have a whole page of community appropriations.
Page nineteen.
Page nineteen, okay. All those totals are figured into that number. Almost historically, they're all voted in, but you do not have to vote them in. These are, this is not something that the select board approves or anything. People come before the select board saying that they want this. We are also working on a policy, and I'll describe that in a minute, but. So the, the number that you see will not get any bigger if you vote for any of those, but it could get smaller if you vote some of them down, okay? In the past, we didn't have a good policy for community appropriations. It just, if somebody came in, we just accepted it, and so on and so forth. We have made a, we have made a policy change in that if somebody wants to increase their community appropriations over next year, over what they did previously, they have to get a petition signed by the, by citizens of Shasbury to do that increase, and if anybody wants to add a new one, it also has to be, a petition has to be, has to be presented. And if you, we only send, we're only going to send out one notice to you, that if you, when it comes around time for the annual report, if you haven't presented us with your, what you want, that you want to be on the ballot again, we aren't going to keep bugging you, and if it falls off for a year, then you're going to have to come back with a petition, So I think we can open up for questions now.
Okay, so anybody have questions of art? Comments? Yes, Karen, come on up to the microphone, please.
This question has to do with, nothing that was presented, but you do have a water board report in, in the town report. A lot of us are on wells, so it's not an issue, but there's an awful lot of folks in town that do get the water, working with North Bennington. And I know there have been issues in the past, more recent past with North Bennington and the contract, and a lot of legal fees. I'm not seeing anything in the budget. I know it used to be, we used to have the water budget in the town report, but that hasn't been happening, and I'm just wondering if you could update the community on the whole water board, you all as, as the water board, where we are with that. I mean, certainly, you know, Coal Hall pays for the water, we're talking about an Economic Development Committee to try to increase things in town, sewer, project, and I'm just wondering where we are with the water situation.
Shasbury's water situation is a cloudy one. We buy water from the town of North Bennington, their water source is in our town, so it's, we're buying back our own water in a way. What started the whole legal process was that they did a major upgrade to their system, starting beyond where we pull our water off from their main line. They went all through North Bennington, new pipes and all that sort of stuff, borrowed several million dollars, and when they sent us our water bill, we were part of the bond, part of that water bill contained something that said we had to help pay for that bond. We said that wasn't fair, we didn't pay, we were sued. That caused lots of money, because now you've got lawyers involved. A judge finally said, you got to understand, we tried to mediate this, we tried to talk, and it just wasn't going anyplace. A judge finally said, you've got to mediate. So we, we mediated, and the agreement was that we did not have to pay the bond issue, we would pay the same amount as a would pay the same amount as a Shasberry resident, or, I'm sorry, we would pay the same amount as a North Bennington resident. That seemed to be okay at the time that we made the thing, but what they did was they raised the rate by like sixty percent the next bill. So, this is, we don't really want to go to lawyers again, but Mr. Durfee has just informed me that maybe Mount Platter will start looking at something like this. The sad thing is, there is no, there is no agency in the state of Vermont that looks at water, municipal waters. You have public service for electricity, but nobody knows what to do about this, and there's a lot of little towns that are in this same dilemma, so I'm hoping that we can get some resolution that way. But it's a very complicated thing, and we're working on it. It's not a good problem.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate the update.
There, actually, just clarification. There is a department that does handle all of the public community water systems, but they don't touch the pricing. That's one thing that, there's nothing in the state of Vermont where you can go to and say, what's a formula for how much somebody should charge for water? Jen?
Hi. Just questioning for clarification. Item number twenty-four on the community appropriations says that it's $475 for the Bennington County Conservation District, but then in the budget, it's only $450. So, it's not a big deal, just wanted to get that accurately understood, whether you're, they're asking for 475 or 450.
Okay. You're looking at what page?
Page nineteen, item number twenty-four.
Yep, yes.
Bennington County Conservation District, shall we appropriate $475?
Yes.
But then on page forty, in the budget, it's $450.
Well, it seems the budget's off $25, twenty-four.
Under the budget for fiscal year 2025.
Community appropriations.
Line four.
Okay.
For BCCB.
I can't answer that.
Our, but the, but our warrant is what's going to be on the, what's going to be on the ballot tomorrow. Four seventy-five will be on the ballot.
So, there might, there may be a $25 swing. De minimis, minor, but thank you. Remember one year, we had a truck that, that we didn't have anymore? We had a different truck? We had to correct that. Up, Tim.
Yeah, I would...
For everyone whose backyard's on the east side of 7A that has horse prints in it, let me know, and I'll bring you some topsoil in the spring. They finally were crowned up on Bob Bertman's backyard by some people that actually knew something about animals, and I got up there, walked them back through Fritz's Orchard. So, what you said, our total strangers stopping, who were telling me where they went and helping catch them. Thank you.
The horses, okay? They're all okay? Any other questions or concerns about our budget?
I don't know if this is right time to ask, but anyway, what I came tonight for, this is the first time I've ever been to a meeting, and I'm sorry, I just haven't, but my main concern is property tax, okay? When my husband was alive, we had social security for both of us, and we were working and all that. We're able to pay our taxes fine, but then when he passed away, I end up with one social security. Like, I see a lot of elderly people here, they're probably in the same boat. But then my, when I got my taxes, my, what is it, the Homestead Act dropped also. So, you know, my main concern is, what can we do to help the senior citizens in the town who can't work to pay their taxes?
Dave, you heard that? Your representative.
What do you have, do you have anything else to say? I see there's a lot of elderly people, senior citizens here, that are probably in the same boat as me, only...
Did you get a rebate? Did you get a rebate?
Excuse me?
Did you get a rebate on your taxes?
I can't, I can't...
Did you get a rebate on your taxes? When you got your property tax paid, did you get a rebate?
She said she did, but it went way down.
Yeah, when my husband died. Yeah, when my husband died, I lost like his social security, so, you know, I'm really tight with my budget, and I'm just wondering if there's anything the town can do to help the senior citizens out.
One of the things that, what I'm hearing is, that you should look at is, the pre-bait is income sensitive, so if your income has gone down, your pre-bait should not have gone down, it should have stayed the same or increased.
The Homestead Act?
Yes, the way that it's supposed to work.
It just dropped a lot.
Okay.
It was like...
That's something you need to have looked into, yes.
The state has... Oh, I did it!
You're all right, Gina.
Sorry, sorry.
Gina does our assessing. She's a good one.
I'm the assessor's clerk.
Assessor's clerk.
And I'm trying to get the people that are income sensitive to make sure...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
I'm trying to make sure that the people that are income sensitive are doing their HS-122s, because some of the elderly people who don't file, their states don't know to do the HS-122s. So, the state has what they call the Tax Advocate. They have a phone number and an email, and you guys can call them, because I can't do anything in our office. We just get the information from the state, and then that gets applied to the school budget, and whatever they deem is what is removed from the school budget, because the school budget is quite higher than the property taxes. So, they help with that. But if you go to the Tax Advocate, call them, it takes them a little bit to get ahold of you, but they are really good about getting back to you. So, you could call them. There's also 211. That is a program that the state has where people could call to see about programs they can get into. They'll answer any questions that you have. There's a couple of programs out there that people just don't know about, and I believe we have them on our webpage, Jen, the Tax Advocate phone number. If not, we can put it up there. And also, just dial 211, and they can provide you with a lot of information that a lot of people don't know.
Somebody dials 211, what, who picks up the phone?
Somebody the state pays.
At the state?
I don't know.
It's got to do with taxes.
They, they just, that's who I tell everybody to call, and everybody seems to like them.
Okay. Alice?
That's a lot of information.
Well, we'll put it on our webpage.
Can she come to you and visit you, and can you go over that more slowly with her, and help her get access to those people who can help her with this problem?
People call me.
There may be other people in the town that have the same problem.
Yes.
And we don't know where to go to...
Yes, I have people call me quite often and ask, and I tell them to call the Tax Advocate. We can put that on our webpage, people call me, you can call me. I'm option...
This is Gina, so if you call the town office and ask to talk to Gina.
I'm option four.
Option four.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's assessors@shasberryvt.gov is the email for the office, but you can call me, just leave me a message if I'm not there. I mean, we're limited on our hours, we are such a small town. But we're, I mean, even the town clerk is very good about getting back with people, so we try our hardest to help you out. Anybody that has questions, and we do have our...
Maybe there's other people that have the same issue, maybe I'm...
No, I do, I have people, we made up little business cards. Marlene has some in her office that, with the Tax Advocate's phone number and their email address. But the state has a pretty good webpage, but the 211 will give you other options that I don't know about, but the Tax Advocate will help you with your HS-122 and stuff like that, but, and if you know, if your friends aren't filing, and ask them to do so, because it's only going to benefit them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Alice? Joyce has recently lost two family members, her husband and her daughter, so her income has dropped considerably.
I mean, I'm lucky at my age, I'm able to go back to work, somebody hired me to go, but I do that, but...
There is...
Is there a reason she's back at Rock County with this problem?
I know, I'm very limited. I believe there is some program the Select Board is in charge of. Someone asked me about it, I don't know much about it. There's some fund that the Select Board has for...
Is there a charity for women? Is there a charity for women and...
Can I, I need to, we've got the budget in front of us, so if I, this, we can take this up again under other business.
Okay.
Okay, so, what's on the floor is the budget. Other questions, concerns? Are you ready to vote? Motion's been made that the town appropriate the sum of $2,741,331 to defray the town's general and highway expenses for fiscal year 2025. The amount of such sum to be raised by property taxes and to be reduced by non-tax revenues and reserve funds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The next article we've got is to transact any other non-binding business, as may come before the board. Art, there's a, there's a piece in the warning that talks about some discussion with regard to tomorrow's ballot articles, which is a little bit unusual, but I wanted to give you an opportunity. Art just nominated you to come up and speak for a moment. Art, I didn't, Art did.
Okay. So, what would you like me to say about that?
Describe the different ballots that we have to go through.
Okay.
Can you go through the order?
Absolutely. Tomorrow, we have three elections we're holding simultaneously. We have a presidential primary, we have a town election, and we have school election. Not everybody's going to vote in the school election in Shasberry, it depends on where you live. If you are in the North Bennington School District, you'll go to North Bennington to vote school only, everything else, you vote here. For presidential primary, we are going to ask you if you want a Democrat or a Republican ballot. We have to ask you, we can only give you one, and it's not even the state of Vermont, it's not us, it's not the state of Vermont, it's the federal parties that want to know which ballot you take. We are all independent in Vermont, and we like it that way, so you can take any ballot you want, it doesn't matter. And then as far as the town ballot, with your town ballot, you're going to get the appropriations, you're going to get the, well, town officers, and you're going to get a few of these zoning bylaw changes that you'll be voting on. Oh, you'll also get the CDC ballot, which is the tech center. That's part of the town ballot, or town voting. Does anybody have any questions on what you're going to be facing tomorrow? Is that all? Be patient, we will check you in as quickly as we can, but there's a lot of ballots, and the new tabulators take a couple of minutes to read each ballot, so there may be a line, especially when you're leaving, but we will get people through as quickly as we can, because we know your time is valuable. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. She starts worrying about it the day after we get done with voting, she starts worrying about it for next year, and then she really starts, seriously, starts pretty hard, what, about three weeks ago, two weeks ago?
December.
December, okay. You know, when we vote, and it's kind of, we, I think it's a problem because I got so many ballots and all that stuff, I want to complain, and I have no idea exactly the amount of effort it takes for her and her assistants to put it all together for us to be able to vote. So, thank you very much for the way you do it, Marlene. So, we're under other business. Yes?
Thank you for getting an envelope that can put the ballots back into that bin. Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you for getting a bigger envelope, so the ballot's all fit.
Thank you, David.
Some other questions or concerns? Anything on tomorrow's, you know, the ballot, there's some zoning changes, things like that? Do you want any information on any of that? The horses didn't get out again, did they?
About the economic development in the village of Shasberry, where is the open land? To bring any economic development in, where is the open land? I look at the map, and it's all house lots or swamp.
Going to pull that down a bit. Thanks for the question. My name is Martha Cornwell, I also sit on the Economic Development Committee. There's a whole bunch of things that we're doing as part of this work on the Economic Development Committee. One of them is that we just received a grant from, a municipal planning grant from the Bennington Regional Planning Commission. They're going to be working with us to do a survey of the town, to look at all of the commercial properties that are available at the moment, and in what state they're in, and so that then we can start to kind of make a plan for bringing back some businesses, other things. If you've lived in the town a long time, you remember Witz Cafe, we just got back the country store online, and one of the things that the Economic Development Committee is really interested in is working closely with Bernstein Property, who owns what used to be the Stanley Tools facility, and seeing if there's a way to kind of bring back some of that work to be online again in some kind of way for economic growth for the town of Shasberry. So, that's, that's some of the land we're looking at.
The Bernstein lot is the only open area.
So, there are some other properties that are around and about, and that's what the Bennington Regional Planning Commission is going to be working on, is to look at other buildings, other properties that may have sat vacant. You've probably, very rare of some of our other towns, both in North Bennington and Arlington, who looked at properties that had sat vacant for a long time, and worked with owners, or purchased private-public partnerships to kind of create things that created momentum within the town. within the town. So that's what we're planning to do. And it's just the first step of what hopefully will be many, many years of, of work to kind of bring back a little bit more businesses, encouraging small business owners, innovators, things like that to come back to Shasberry to be working.
It's interesting you say that because the house just south of me was a commercial quilt shop. Then it was a commercial tile shop. And then a fellow wanted to turn it into his custom-made vinyl windows. And the town said no. And there's already two other commercial properties there. And I went to those meetings and, I don't know, there's a zoning or development review board or whatever, but they were totally negative.
Yep.
That was a business that could still be here, but it's over in Eagle Bridge now because we said no.
Certainly, yes. There have been changes to some of the bylaws that have encouraged, I think, especially in the time that I actually sat on the planning commission, to talk about kind of business. And it is very much all of the committees working together to try to bring this back online again. It's unfortunate that that happened. But hopefully, we will continue to try to encourage people to be here, practice here, work here, because it's a beautiful town to be here and to work in.
I don't think we can ever afford a sewer system.
We'll see. We've got the grant. I'm really excited. It, it took us almost three years to get that grant. And so we'll see what kind of this feasibility study says. Certainly, the technology has changed a great deal since the last time we had a sewer feasibility study, which was back in 2006. So we'll see kind of how things go, and I'm an optimist, so, and I think Shasberry's years are exciting, and we've got a vision, so hopefully, we can keep moving it forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes. Yep, up to the microphone, please.
Hi, everybody. Andrea Baki here. I'm the Vice President of the Economic Development Committee. Can you hear me? I just want to say something to what Alan just said. Economic development is not just buildings. I'm a freelancer. I work out of my home in Shasberry. And on the Economic Development Committee, we also want to give light and support to small businesses, freelancers, entrepreneurs, that are not just, that have at-home businesses too. So that's really important because I think a lot of times, and I can say this from experience of being a freelancer in business since 2020, my mother owns Vermont and my cookies. She's been in business 21 years now, that Vermont has a, a lot of support for small businesses. I also work with the Vermont Small Business Development Center. There's a ton of clients that I work with that do not have brick and mortars. So we have to support freelance economic development. It's not just brick and mortar. I would highly suggest, if you have questions, I mean, I'm not trying to give a, a push to the VTSBDC, but honestly, if you're a small business, you're in business for 20 years or wanting to start a business, I would reach out to them. But also, I think Shasberry has done a great job, and we're going to bring more light to that in the future. But I want everybody to feel supported. I want freelancers to feel supported too. And Vermont in general has some work to do, but I, I really, I have faith that we can really make that happen for everybody, so everybody's included. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Hello. I don't really do this stuff. My husband usually comes to the meetings, but-
What's your name? For the record.
My name is Erin McInnany. I live on Town Line Road.
Okay.
I'm here just to say a few words about Article C and in support of it. And I'm a prepared person as far as it took me to walk from my car into this building, so.
Okay, about which one? Article?
Article C. Was for Spinelli Field.
Oh, all right. Okay, that's, no, they're business. This, this is a-
Is it okay?
No, we're town, but it's school.
Okay.
And we're all part of that school too.
We all get to vote on it.
Is it okay if we hear from her on that?
Yeah.
Yes. There you go.
All right. So I, summarizing some of my thoughts on my way in tonight, I think we are a community of, that we often looked outwardly to see what others are doing. It's clear that we are doing that tonight, and we have a lot of vision. We are wanting that for our own community and specifically our kids. And I think approval of Spinelli Field isn't important for us to show up for our youth and to show them that they are, we, they are important to us. So kids who are involved, this is no secret, are active, and are active are more likely to show up to school, do well, not play video games, which they're not horrible, but all the time is probably not that great. And frankly, do drugs. So they learn in athletics, they learn dedication, accountability, hard work, what it's like to have a community and a team behind you. And having an athletic field that serves multiple uses, whether it's for athletics or taking a class outside in the spring, when, I gotta tell you, it's probably really awesome for us. I want snow, believe me. But I also like to get outside this time of year. But being able to educate youth on a field that's usable, has good drainage, lighting, a track that won't hurt somebody, is important. So as I said earlier, as adults who have the power to show up and vote for something that can make a positive impact for our youth, I feel like we all should show up and tell them that it's, they are important to us, and we're willing to invest in them. So I hope you all vote positively for Spinelli Field improvements and Article C.
Thank you. Thank you. There are some folks here that want to speak on community appropriations. Yes? Let's, let's take you first, please. Yes, yep. You're a resident of the town, right?
I'm a resident.
Okay, so you get, you get to talk without any shenanigans or like, whatever.
Can I face this way and can you still hear me?
As long as you can talk into the microphone, so.
Talk into both mics? Yeah, if you can, just kind of lean over. So that's good. Okay, great. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me? Excellent. Well, I'm, I've attended a lot of these meetings before, but it's my first time speaking because I am going to be a new line item on the appropriations list. Number 25, last one, best for last, I would say. My name's Karen Rose, and I live in town, and I am a licensed wildlife rehabber, and I run Monty's House Wildlife Rehab, which is a, thank you, which is a 501(c)(3) that is also registered in Shasberry. I have been licensed since 2018, and Monty's House has been a 501(c)(3) since October of 2020. I am one of 26 licensed rehabbers throughout the state of Vermont. We all have different licenses. Mine happens to be currently for small, non-rabies vector mammals. I say currently because I do have an open, active application in with the federal government with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Department for songbird rehab, because all birds, except for a handful of them, are federally protected under the Migratory Bird Act. The question I always get, and the reason why I'm asking for some town appropriation and the amount of $1,000, is how am I funded? How do we do what we do? Because there are 26 of us. We are, we kind of joke that we are licensed volunteers. It requires a permit because it is illegal to possess wildlife in the state of Vermont without a permit. So we are permitted volunteers, however, and our licenses are through the state of Vermont, through the Department of Fish and Wildlife, however, we get no funding whatsoever from the state or the department. So how are, how am I funded? Me personally, I have a full-time job besides the rehab gig. I'm fortunate enough to work from home, which allows me to attend to a lot of the wildlife that I intake. A lot of us have wish lists, whether they be on Amazon or Chewy. And then some of it, myself, I do a calendar fundraiser every single year, which has been successful since 2020. And then there are just kind people who financially support the rehab. So the appropriation is because I, I live in town, I intake a lot of critters from town. If you want to see any of the more specifics or details, I'm on page 73 of the annual report, which details my intakes for 20, the year 23, and what I'm overwintering right now into 24. It, it's not cheap to feed the critters. It's all volunteer, and it's not cheap. A thousand bucks will offset a month in the height of the summer. The height last year of 23, I had 49 intakes, 49 critters living in my house with me. They transitioned from my house out to the release pens in my yard, and then out further into the wild. But that is why I'm seeking some funding from the town, because I am a resident and my rehab is in town as well. I'll stick around as well afterwards if anybody has any more detailed questions about me, the rehab, or the critters. I'm happy to talk about them. But we certainly would love your consideration for a vote of yes to number 25 for Monty's House. And the critters and I thank you in advance for your support. Thank you.
So when I have a bird and I don't know what to do with it, if I'm going to try to feed it or whatever, I should call you, right?
First, yes. If I can't help you, I'm not licensed bird expert, but I can't help you, I would certainly direct you to somebody who, who can help.
Or a porcupine.
I have those.
Yeah, you did one, okay. Are you both on the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. Are, are you both, either one of you residents of the town of Shasberry? You are, okay. And you're not, but you want to speak, right? Okay. Normally, people who aren't residents aren't allowed to speak, yada, yada, yada. Is it okay if we hear from this young lady? These young ladies with regards to? Okay, there you go. It's a formality.
Well, thanks. It's good to see your faces. Hello. And good to see so many neighbors here tonight. My name's Jenny Rozicky. I'm the Director at the John G. McCullough Free Library in North Bennington. And with me is?
Hi, I'm Giselle Gaietsch, Shasberry resident, and I am the Youth Services Librarian at the John G. McCullough Free Library.
And we've had an amazing year. The building reopened in December 2023 after an extensive renovation. And we had, once again, our, our best year ever. It was pretty amazing. So by every measure that we track, new memberships, programs, program attendance, and use of the collection, we've beat every benchmark. It's been an amazing year, and that's possible because of your support. If you want all the details, we're on page number 71 in your town report. And I think the, the main point I'd like to share this evening were the many partnerships and outreach that we did with Shasberry this past year, especially with the Historical Society. We had the, the Shasberry Signature Quilts for our local history day in August. And there was a very well-attended program that we did in partnership with the Cemetery Committee about caring for old headstones. So, and-
I also just want to echo Jenny's thanks. I've really appreciated, over the past year, just increasing partnerships, increasing membership. It's always lovely to have somebody come into Youth Services and say, I'm new here, I'm, you know, to the library, I'm from Shasberry. And I was like, yay, me too. But just wanted to, again, thank you for, thank, thank the school for one thing. Shasberry Elementary just re-hosted Dino Man this past November. I've had a couple of really great partnerships besides where we, we, we came into Shasberry to, to run the program, and I'm looking forward to many more. Thank you for your support, and thank you for coming to the John G. McCullough Free Library. We appreciate it.
Also, if you'd like a membership, I have application cards with me in my purse. So come find me and take advantage of all the library offers.
Thank you for taking the time to, to come in and, and speak. This young lady. I'm going to ask you to come right up here. It'll be easier than to try to do that.
I am not a resident. Unfortunately.
They let everyone else speak. You can too, I think. Here you go, right here. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Toomire. I was here last year. I want to, I'm here on behalf of Sunrise Family Resource Center in Bennington. I want to start out by saying thank you yet again for your $1,000 appropriation. We are extremely grateful for the support. For those of you who may be somewhat aware, Sunrise is actually Bennington County's parent-child center. We're one of 15 centers from throughout the state. We provide supportive services for families with young children from prenatal right straight through till the age of 24. We have, we're the CIS Fiscal Agent. For any of you who may have children or grandchildren in early intervention, we take care of that program for the county. We have a, an alternative high school that teaches parents about life skills, parenting skills, as well as them getting their academic skills and a diploma from Mount Anthony. This past year, we've done an incredible amount of work in supporting folks who are homeless, who are precariously almost homeless. We have, we have an onsite pantry this, a couple years ago, that has sort of been extremely helpful with folks who can't make their EBT SNAP benefits last for the month. It's open for, it's a very small pantry, so it's open for families that we work with. I was extremely excited to hear Art mention something about a community center, because some of the concrete support services that we provide as a parent-child center are play groups. We do home visits that supports families in their home, wherever they are. We have been providing these services for 55 years this year. Long time. You know, I think if I had to give you a number between 1,200, maybe, children and families. We have an early care and education program onsite that works with infants to the age of three. Transportation was a big thing this year for us to try to help folks. We found out that people who rode the Green Mountain Express bus, you know, folks without transportation, couldn't bring their groceries on the bus. Oh dear. Couldn't bring their laundry on the bus. Oh dear. So we, we, we brainstormed and went after some grant money that allowed us to provide that kind of support to those families. You know, these young families and children that we support are tomorrow's leaders, and we have put every ounce of passion and energy into making sure that they are successful. And that requires community support. And so when I say that we are very grateful for the support that you provide us, I mean that. It makes a huge difference. If you want to read more, we're on page 79. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other folks? Art?
Yep, we've got somebody here.
Why don't you come on right up here? It's easier to talk and look at the folks.
Good evening. I'm Dr. David King, and I'm here at, at the request of the GPICS group. I'm on the board of the Greater Bennington Community Service, who sponsors the Bennington Free Clinic, now known as the G. Richard Dundas Free Clinic. We also do the kitchen cupboard food pantry, as well as emergency fuel and food fund for residents in the county. As far as the Shasberry residency, this past year, we had eight clients for a total of 16 clinic visits. The kitchen cupboard had 33 families for a total of 430 visits where they received food. And we thank you for your ongoing support. Shasberry has been supporting us for a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Yeah, come on up here.
In front of the glass?
Yeah, front of the glass.
You know I'm Alan Baker by now, and I'm here to support WBTN. It's our local community radio station. I've had a show on air for the last 10 years, Thursdays, 1 to 2, politics of food, live call-in show. Questions about agriculture? Call me. See if I can find the answer. But there's openings for anyone who has a passion for anything, to get on your own soapbox and come down and do your own show. It's not that hard. And I'd love to have high school kids that want to be broadcasters broadcast MAU games. If you know any student that likes to do that for the upcoming spring season, get in touch with us, and we figure out how we can make that work. Because that would really, it's an opportunity if someone wanted to try to be a broadcaster. I don't know where you learn how to do that, but if a student would like to do that, or any student has any passion about anything, they want to come on and sing, or any adult, a lot of retired people in here, you have a passion for something, come on down and share with everybody else. Thanks.
So if somebody wanted to come down to the station, and they don't know what to do, they call you or they knock on the door, and they come in and they say what it's all about, what they're all about, you'd help them to understand how to, where to sit and what to do, what structure or program or something for them? Would you be able to do that?
Yes. Some of me or someone else would be able to do that.
Okay, WBTN.
Jason Lilly is the head of the board.
Yep, Jason Lilly, yep.
I think his contact information is on the website.
WBTN website.
Yep.
Okay.
People aren't there all the time. They're only there for doing the show or setting up programs. If they hit or miss, you can show up.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
I just wanted, very briefly, Joyce asked about if there's anything the town could do. We gave her a lot of things that state was doing, but there is a fund, it's the Julia Madison Fund. It was established in 1926, and the fund is to provide care, comfort, and maintenance of an aged and needful woman who are residents of Shasberry, under the term of Ms. Madison's will. I don't know what that will states or anything, but a call to the, what am I trying to say? Trustee of public funds. Trustee of public funds probably has the will, has the money. We will look into it for Joyce, okay? Anybody else?
Thank you, Art. Other questions, concerns, comments? If there aren't any, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you all very much for coming, and we'll look forward to seeing you next year.